I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining the Bourbon County Commission meeting October 7th. Approval and dissent agenda please.
I guess I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from 9:30 2024 and 10:04 2024. Approval of payroll totaling $289,779.42 and we'll also approve accounts payable totaling
All right, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Department updates, public works please.
I heard a moan from the back.
Or some kind of noise anyway.
I said I'm on the way.
Like a broom.
You're charged up there.
How are you?
I'm here. About yourself?
I'm here.
I hear you.
Quite a day.
Culvert permit for the month. We had one Shane Walker. I don't know the address, but.
Hold on.
Yeah.
It's already doubled, didn't it?
Triple.
Triple.
1115 207th Street.
Yep.
For 7:35 21.
Gun Park Edition.
Yep.
There you go, sir.
Yep.
Fuel reports, if you haven't seen them, they'll get emailed to you.
We got it. I got them.
You did get it? Okay. Price is looking very good on that.
Good prices.
Yes. Have a meeting with FEMA tomorrow. We're going to be looking at setting up times to look at the, what we are calling Quadrant One, which is 125th 54 Highway, everything north and west of that area. So that's the area that they will be looking at to start off with.
Now, are they looking at your repairs or your early on, your whatever?
Everything. They'll be looking at repairs that are done, make sure that debris has been removed, that we said has been removed.
Good.
If we've had to replace culverts, they'll be looking at that to make sure that we have done that. They'll want our permit for the landfill where we took our debris. So we'll have that for them and then we'll start talking some mitigation as well on a couple of different projects.
That's good news.
So we're moving forward with that. Asphalt update. Sales tax came in just a little bit higher than what we expected. I am going to go out and get maple done. There's about 3,000 feet of maple. I want to get it done so that a way we can do some preventative maintenance if the commission will allow us next year.
Now, that west, are they convenient store?
It'll be, yes.
Okay.
So it'd be from 55th Street, about three quarters of a mile east back in towards Union Town.
Okay.
I think, well, it's not that I think. We're comfortable enough that we feel that we can get that little section done.
That's your call.
That's what we're looking at. So, and then when we get that done, we're going to put the equipment away and look at doing a little bit of crack sealing. We know we got several areas from the dry weather that we've had. Mother Nature has been pretty brutal to us last two years, so.
Been moving a lot, hasn't it?
Yeah, ground's been expanding, contracting, so it's pretty cold temperatures as well, so.
Yeah.
But anyhow, that's kind of gives you an update of what we're looking at there. Still hauling gravel on roads and trying to clean up from the storm and what have you.
Are you crushing a blake or are you crushing?
We're still at Blake. We're cleaning Blake up, getting ready to pull the screen out and run nothing but the crusher and make road rock.
Good.
So the dirty stuff that was, that we've had in there, we're going to run it through and make good road rock out of it so we can get that on a road.
Time of year, isn't it?
It is. That it is. Let me find my notes here. A little bit of confusion on this that went out today on social media. God love social media. Anyhow, railroad crossing on Jayhawk will be closed the morning of Wednesday, October 9th, and it will be closed for a couple of days. I think there was some information put out that it was going to be closed tomorrow. That's according to what was sent to us from BNSF. It will be closed Wednesday.
I gave Brian your phone number last week, so.
Yeah.
Roadmaster.
Yeah. Now, East National, that's the city's, I can tell you it is going to, according to this, be closed tomorrow, but I will leave that up to the city. That's theirs. Brad and I have talked today. I think they're going to put out their notification as well or correct the one that's out there. So, but everyone needs to know that BNSF is going to be working on crossings all the way from Wall Street clear down to the Crawford County line and going on into Crawford and Barton and whatever other counties down there, so.
They have a servicing gang here.
Yep.
And they want to service to those crossings.
Okay.
That's what they're doing.
Yep.
They're, you know, they've tampered and put new ballast in there and.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully it makes the crossings better, is normally what happens.
Right. But our citizens need to know you will be inconvenienced. They are going to have.
And there's nothing anybody can do about it.
Right.
I mean, the railroad gets to do what they want.
Right.
For the most part, so.
So you might know a little bit about that.
I've said this before, my first form in school back in the 70s, I went to railroad. The first thing they taught us to tell the truth. We was here first.
Yep.
And the railroad was there first.
So.
That's what we told citizens to come up to the crossing and not argue. We's here first.
Right.
Move your road, so.
So I did contact the three businesses that are right out there in that general area, so they are aware of what's taking place.
Good.
So not only will it be this week, there's a possibility it could be next week, and then there's a real strong probability that they're going to work all the way down starting next week.
Yeah.
So we'll try and, as we are given the closures, we'll try and get it put out on social media for you.
Good.
We had motor grader training last week, did one day in class, one day out in the field, went really well. Guys are working on pulling some of the ditches right now since we're so dry, trying to get some ditches where water can run, get our, what we call our redneck curb and guttering, where we have the lips on the side of the road that looks like curbs. We're trying to get those filled in so that a way the water has a place to run to get to the ditches.
Good.
So some of the areas look a little rough right now, but they'll get compacted in. If we need to bring gravel in, we will bring gravel in and get a good driving surface on there. So just want to give everybody a heads up what's going on there, so that a way everyone knows. Speed limit on Eagle Road from US Highway 69 to 250th. Had that brought to my attention about maybe pulling the signs that was put up there when it was gravel. I would like to wait for just a little bit until we get a chance to come in and we need to add some rock, bring the rock up to the edge of the asphalt. There's still a little bit of a drop there. We're in the process of getting that accomplished. I'd hate to go ahead and raise the speed limit until, or take it back to what it was before until we get that.
Let us know what you want.
Okay. I'll do that. Got invited to a Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission Safety Task Force meeting, Safe Streets and Roads for All, set in on a, I don't know what you call it, a virtual meeting, I guess. I don't know. Meeting was in Chanute, because they were joined by the computer. But that kind of gives you a rundown of what they're talking about, looking at putting a comprehensive safety action plan together to help prevent accidents. And then once they get the, get that all put together, read down through there, looks like there's going to be some grants available eventually here for people to apply for and what have you. But not sure how I got nominated for that or how I got, chose to be on there, but wanted to let you know that that's what I was setting in on. Brandon, I think you actually called the other day.
Oh, that was, that was, that was when she was on, I called you.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, that's.
Brandon, this is in your area, 85th Street between Xavier and Yale, Bright Speed phone line. They did call me back Wednesday of last week, said that they're going to get that line moved. So we have mowed each side of 85th except for right there where that line is.
Okay.
So as soon as we can get that cleaned up, we'll get the blades in there and the trucks in there and we'll get some gravel on that road and get that road.
I told them, we was still waiting, waiting on the phone company and they said, well, they've been down there working, so they noticed.
Okay.
That you've been doing some stuff, so.
Good, good.
Done well.
Xavier going up that hill, we're going to try and get that, get some rock on that. Probably going to have to put a little dirt, clay in there and pack and then put some rock on it because that's pretty rough and steep and we're down to the bedrock, so kind of let you know on that. This next one I want to touch on, been some false information put out on wonderful social media again. It was stated yesterday that the county is going to drain Elm Creek Lake and make it into a rock quarry. That is not what was discussed at the.
And I would never agree to that, just so we know.
What was discussed was core drilling the property that we own to see what is there to see if there's any rock there. So I just want to clarify that again. We're going to core drill the property that we own in the southeast corner of Elm Creek Lake to see if there's any rock there. We are not draining Elm Creek Lake, so.
Do you remember how quiet it was before social media?
Oh. So anyhow.
Anyway.
That's, I just wanted.
I'm glad you're not training draining Elm Creek Lake, so.
That is out there. Somebody actually posted that and luckily my assistant caught it and responded back and got that shut down. So that is not the plan at all, so. With that, I got one more and I think Sheriff Martin is there. Ask him to come up here and we're going to talk.
Hell, Sheriff.
Safety Committee. You want up here or you want up there? We're.
Your red light is on, isn't it? Yeah.
Yes, it is.
The red.
The light is on, so.
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Since this world isn't part of the agenda, but it's kind of tied in with them, if you want to make a motion to amend the agenda to talk about the safety committee through K-Works, that's need to be cleaner and understanding then.
That's under his time also, so.
All right. We've been working on this together, so. But.
Go ahead. You're the one that asked for K-Works to come in.
Several weeks ago, you assigned Eric to look into the K-Works safety committee program and stuff. We had talked, I went ahead and advised him that I would kind of not really take the lead, but I'll go out and seek information. I reached out to K-Works, we had a meeting with them last week. They shared some information with us, so I'm going to share that with you to make a decision if we need to go with the board with this or not. K-Works, this program for the safety committee is brand new to them, but just started this summer, so it's brand new. It's nothing that's been in the works for months, years or whatever. So it's brand new, so it's just several months old. The other thing is that out of the 80 clients or memberships, I guess, the proper members, the properly used members, out of 80, there's only six that are currently at this present time. So when we talked about the savings, what the county would say, would be if you join or if you make a decision to join, that's basically $2,000 a year or practically $500 a month. Is that 6,000? No, it's 2,000. 2,000, okay. It's 2,000, yeah, my probably 6,000 a year and $500 a month. So if I stand corrected on that. So, but like I said, there's a, it's set the board or the committee set up, just like any other committee, there's approximately six to eight members. We have going to president, vice president, secretary, he meet once a month taking notes. Two departments that's really affected by this is, I hate to say it, but it's him and it's mine. Problem is, he has more claims than I do. So, I'm sorry.
Shame on you, Eric.
Sorry.
It's a young as bus.
Yeah, but anyways, that's what the meeting was about last week, several department heads and all of the government officials also. So anyways, it's decisions you guys want to make. We want to save, you know, $6,000 for the first year. Like I said, this is a new program, there's only six members out of 80 that's actually signed up. If you want to wait for another year, see what happens, see if this roads let them actually just keep wet, get it established, get the daylight, they're still working on this stuff too. And so I thought I'd just bring, tell Eric, God bring it to your guys' attention, you can make the decision and go from there. And so that's what we found out in regards to K-Works.
So what's your guys' recommendation? It's hard to have too much safety, but if you have enough, we have enough.
Well, like I explained during the meeting, I asked him what kind of safety precautions are you looking for on sheriff's side or on corrections side. I mean, I tried to give an example, like that D runs, falls, breaks his finger, is that a safety issue? That now we have to write a policy that there's no longer foot chases because it's a workman con claim because he got work injured during the performance of his duties? Those are some of those questions that I asked, and really can have an answer for that. You know, I'm to address it.
What's your thought, Brandon?
I don't know. I mean, it's, I mean, like you said, it's going to be the first responders and the public works to have the most to gain from being, but if you guys feel like your safety programs, your safety guidebooks is where it needs to be, then we can wait and see how this plays out.
Are you satisfied, Eric, that your safety program is where it needs to be?
Can you, like, I don't know if this is a guilt breaker or not, you have eight, there's eight county employees taking an hour of their time towards eight hours total in under an activity that you can sit and try to discuss safety factors within the community and all the rest to the departments.
Right, right.
So you're, you know, you're losing that eight hour type of activity to their employees.
True, but, but.
That's the question, towards all, if we put all the departments.
But if it would be improved or safety and possibly prevent someone getting a serious injury, that's a very low investment.
Right.
I want to hear what you guys say. You're out in the field.
I will tell you our safety manual could be updated, so. We have, we're, we're making all the settings.
Right, correct.
So I'm teetering on the fence with it, if I'm going to be 100% honest. Was it being a brand new program? That's kind of got me teetering, but at the same time realize that, you know, you can never have too much safety, so.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we guys just work on updating your safety books yourselves and then we can help, I mean, we're.
Well, it would help if K-Works would finish their program.
Right.
What their expectations are and give you some guidelines for us, probably some handbooks and things like that.
I think they have a little bit of a printout.
Do they?
Kind of what they're expecting, but you know, as Sheriff Martin says, if you can still green, it's in the early phase.
What do you, what do you guys want to do?
You know, I'm all about safety here.
Oh, I know you are, yeah.
I mean, guys don't need jobs, so we're best and stuff like that. And like you said, in a workman con claim, here's another example. You know, we had a, that D a couple of weeks ago, about a month ago, had a conversation with an individual, the individual spent in W6. That is a, you know, workman con, you have to go get checks, follow-ups and stuff like that. So what's a safety thing that we need to do to avoid something like that so it doesn't have to be, do we wear masks on all our calls and stuff? We don't, but it's just part of the job that we go through, we participate in. But like I said, I'm all about safety and I agree with Eric, this project's still all the green. I'll look forward to that, you know, foundation set. And you see other counties or other memberships that actually is going to, instead of only six.
And certainly your two departments completely different, a spin the face or turn a motor grader over.
Or turn a dump truck over.
Or dump truck or hit a bridge or something, so. I don't have any problem. You want to wait six months?
Yeah, I don't have a problem waiting and see how this, the state's program develops and, and, and like I said, you guys working on your own thing in the house to get it.
Yeah.
I mean, you guys know your department's better than anybody else, so there's no sense in, if the state don't have their thing developed yet, then we can just wait another six or 12 months to see how it develops.
Maybe get an update in six months from them and see what it looks like. Just, just a suggestion, so.
Yeah.
See how many of their members sign up.
Yeah, okay. I'm good with that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, gentlemen. That it, Eric?
That is all I have. Do you have anything for us? I need a picture.
I do not. I don't have anything for you.
If you do, you got my number or?
Yeah, no, mine, mine usually, I'm pretty usually pretty good at calling it, at least once a week.
Yeah, so. All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
County clerk, please.
So tonight, I just want to talk a little bit about electioneering and what, what it is. A lot of people haven't heard the term electioneering, but with the election coming up, I wanted to let everybody know that wearing any type of political signs, shirts, stickers, anything like that is against statute KS A 25-2430, which reads knowingly attempting to persuade or influence eligible voters to vote for or against a particular candidate, party or question submitted, including wearing, exhibiting or distributing labels, signs, posters, stickers or other materials that clearly identify a candidate in the election or clearly indicate support or opposition to a question submitted election within any polling place on election day or advanced voting site during the time period allowed by law for passing a ballot. So this is within the radius of 250 feet of the entrance. So anybody that has any type of political signs that are near the courthouse, any of the polling places on election day or early voting, they have to, can't be pinned to their 50 feet. Now, the only thing with this is this does not include bumper stickers that are permanently affixed to a motor vehicle that's going to transport voters who are from the polling place. But that being said, so flags, you see a lot of flags from the back of trucks, magnets on the side of vehicles, pins, hats, t-shirts. So this would include the candidate's names, any type of slogans, political party animals, things like that, that I just want to get, get that information out there so that everybody's aware come election day what is and isn't allowed. I will say that this statute says electioneering is a classed stimulus to me, and we don't want any trouble, we just want everybody to be able to come in, cast your votes and go anywhere, so.
Very good.
And then I get some stuff put together and get it to the newspapers, get it on Facebook, on the website, just so everybody is aware.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commission comments?
Um, yeah, I do got something real quick.
Okay.
So I've been trying to get my communication towers put up and we're going, and we have $150,000 in ARPA funds that we got to get allocated for before the end of the year. And after talking to him, he would give $25,000 of it back to the commission if we needed to, if we need to use it for the hospital or any of that stuff. But he would like us to go ahead and allocate the 125,000 of ARPA funds to, and we don't have to do it today, but we need to do it for the end of the year for the foundations and the towers down in the northwest end of the county.
Well, the 156 ARPA money, we need 105 of that for hospital funds. We have to, the number is 500, we have 396 in the equipment reserve fund, so we need another 105 to make that number work, and that's ARPA money. That's where it was targeted from day one several months ago. So we cannot release 105 of that today. If we do, we won't have funds to help with our healthcare program.
Okay.
Now, if you can come up, I don't know the ideal, I'm good, but right now, well, that's where 105 of that's targeted for the healthcare.
Okay.
So.
No, that's why I said we didn't need, no, I'll, I'll look into it.
Look into it and if there's another resource, let me know or we can talk about it some more and.
No, that's fine. I just.
Yeah, because that makes it half, makes it 500,000.
Okay.
With the 395 and the general equipment fund and taking 105 out of ARPA would make it a half million dollars that we've committed to.
Okay.
Okay. Just want to take a lot of concrete, put those tires up.
Well, the problem is there's only a handful of guys that do it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's.
Okay. But if we're working with a CFO, if you can come up any other avenue for funding.
I'll, I'll work on it this week and see what we can do.
Certainly understand what you're trying to do, so.
Right, yeah, because I would like to, you know, I mean, a lot of it's for the first responders and they've been working and he's been talking to NewWave and Commerce about getting broadband to that end of the county too for all those areas.
New Wave, be nice to get up there hidden, the Hidden Valley.
Hidden Valley, Mapleton.
New Wave would be great up there. My son has and it works good, so.
Yeah.
Out southeast of town, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what, that's, that's the plan. That's what I'm trying to do anyway, so.
Okay, good plan.
I forgot about the 105 for the, or didn't realize we'd had that part that much. Earmark for that. So other than that, I don't think I have much to talk about tonight.
Okay. County Councilor Meeks, I want him to speak a little bit. You want me to amend the agenda or you just want to talk under my time?
You can amend the agenda just to talk about healthcare a little bit.
Okay.
And you can leave it, I don't, I can make sure you're saying the right thing and not saying the right things.
You better not chant, say.
Pretty good. You don't have to say anything out loud.
No, I want you to talk about it under my time, then I'll add to it, if that's all right. We don't have to amend the agenda, we won't, so. At our view.
That's fine, that's fine with me.
All right, here we go.
Just technically, I probably would go ahead and amend the agenda just to make sure.
Okay. Brandon, you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we amend the agenda to allow, I guess, the county councilor, Justice Meeks, to speak about, what are we speaking about?
Healthcare.
Healthcare.
About healthcare in the county.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That all we got to do? Is that's that simple?
That's it.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. We had a kind of unscheduled meeting today with the players and the hospital that we've been working on for quite some time. It goes back to, you know, actually, you know, not 2019, January of 2019, when this journey started. May of, like, October 7th of this, this, today, we had, we had a meeting. I'm standing because it's, there's so much information, I don't want to be here for five hours. I'm just trying to make this as fast as possible, but back in May of 2024, Freeman Health Systems became involved in our potential healthcare future with the help of KRI and Legacy Health. Without Legacy Health and without KRI, we would not have the ability to be where we are today with Freeman, Freeman Health Systems. Freeman, at that time with KRI and with Legacy, spent time to see if it was even feasible, to see if the building that was donated to Legacy and having some leases working with KRI could be, this idea could happen. After that initial assessment in May, in June of 13th of 2024, Freeman made the announcement to the community that they were going to make, open an acute care hospital. From that point forward, there was some miss, just information's hard at this time, you know, we have a lot of stuff that's been going on, but since that time, basically, from that point forward to literally the meeting on October 3rd, Commissioner Beth has been very involved in the progression of Freeman Health Centers coming to Bourbon County. Without him, this wouldn't be going, this wouldn't happen.[1738.13] Um, I think at the last meeting, I wasn't able to be here personally, I was in an executive session. And just basically, the information needs to be made aware that everyone that, without Clifton, without Commissioner Beth's help, this probably, this would not be happening. And that was reiterated today by Freeman. Um, mid-August is when the equipment situation kind of became a little interesting. Um, I think people in the room remember, we had an executive session and you came out of executive session and made a vote to look at hiring another attorney to help with this situation. But as of, um, August twenty-second, we didn't need that anymore. Because the group's ascension, um, made the, um, agreement to basically not have any issues more with, with the equipment. And as of today, um, all the equipment will be returned back to the facility, including the, the scanners and the, um, I guess, the software that's needed. So with that help, everything that we had problems with, you know, a month ago, that were very minimal, have now been taken care of. And without Commissioner Beth's, uh, input, this, this wouldn't be happening. So, last week when it was said that the equipment wasn't taken care of, it was, but just people didn't know because of the information of not violating coma. You know, I had direct communication, I talked to Chairman, um, Harris, like I always do, but I couldn't tell, you know, the commissioner, because that's a violation of coma, and obviously Clifton can't call Jim or Brandon, because that's a violation too. So, you guys, without Clifton being here, you had no, no idea what was happening with the information.
Right.
Now, there was an executive session, I think, that occurred that were, there might have been some communication concerning the equipment, but that changed pretty dramatically, pretty quickly, within the last two weeks.
We just didn't know it.
Right, yeah. So, right now, the equipment has been taken care of, the issue with, the title's been taken care of. Um, and that was no fault of Legacy at all, no fault of KRI. It was an issue with getting the proper signatures through the state of Kansas and then through our organization. We received that letter to have those abated, um, probably less than three, maybe three or four weeks ago. And the internal elected officials and department heads worked really hard on getting that taken care of, and that was done on Friday. And so, I was informed by Legacy's attorney that closing will be probably within the next five to seven business days. So the KRI will be handling that, and when that lease gets signed, then, or when that happens, then KRI can finalize their lease with Freeman and then we're moving forward. So the equipment's taken care of, purchase is taken care of. The only other thing that we have to do, and I'll be asking for a motion at some point, is to actually, um, give Freeman the half a million. Uh, and then the city of Fort Scott, I think it's very soon, it's going to be voting on giving out the six hundred thousand that they promised. But it'll have to be within probably the next fourteen to twenty-one business days. Because they have big plans and they're going to show us where the money goes. And then the sales tax, um, information, they've agreed to let us look how they spend that money too. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand, give or take, hopefully it's that much, will be, uh, will have direct information from Freeman showing how that's spent. Not proprietary, but pretty good idea of how it goes. So, any, any other, more information or do you want?
No, well, I'd like to comment just a little bit, we did have a good meeting at Freeman today, uh.
And the city was very active and we appreciate them too.
One of the committee persons on the sales tax was with us, uh, we had a great meeting, talked about him, pardon?
Can I go?
Yes, you got it. The chiefs don't start yet. We had a great meeting, uh, met with the CEO and COO and a lot of other people at Freeman. Uh, city of Fort Scott was there, really going forward, they were very excited with the news that we shared with them, of course, equipment in the building today. Everything is on track. They want to, Mrs. Baker wanted me to share with all the citizens in Bourbon County, they are so excited to be here. And I would like to say publicly, that Legacy has cooperated with KRI and Freeman a hundred and fifty percent. So any doubt, that Legacy is not trying to help Bourbon County, take it off Facebook, that's not true. I know these guys, I, I've, I've talked to, and I can't go into the technical session, what we talked about, but I know these guys, I've talked to KRI and I've seen the, the tax abatement from the state, and Freeman's very happy. So thank you, gentlemen. So, one other thing I'd like to share with everyone, for the public, please make no mistake, Commissioner Beth's been working on healthcare for three years. I mean, I got excited the other day when we had this meeting because I like getting involved and I was excited about helping this and that. But don't let my excitement mislead you, Commissioner Beth has done a hundred, a good job, great job chasing healthcare, twenty-four, seven. You know, he never gave up, he never gave up. So I want the public to, to thank Commissioner Beth for all his hard work. I think we'll see him back, but he's got some things going on, but make no mistake, we're getting healthcare because Commissioner Beth's dedication to Bourbon County, make no mistake. He, he'd led this from day one, he wasn't here, I wasn't here a month, he started in on that, and that's been four years ago. So he never gave up, he worked with other entities, two for sure, and other ones, and numerous meetings. I, I just can't say enough what Commissioner Beth has done for Bourbon County. So please, Facebook people, the haters, leave him alone. He's done a great job, meet the guy, ask him questions, he'll share with you. So, if you see him, say thank you, he deserves it, and so does Legacy help, thank you for being dedicated to Bourbon County because we want an ER and a hospital, and you're going to make it happen. So thank you very, very much, and Commissioner Beth's going to make it happen, so. That's all I have. Motion to adjourn.
I want to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion and discussion, all in favor, aye? Thank you, Brandon.
Just watch the pork, guy, I can't, I'm hunting. I pull the burger out, right there.
I'm going to miss you guys, so.
Thank you. Thank you for what you got done.
You see, state of Kansas is giving out one hundred and fifty-one million dollars to provide. And.
Yeah, that's what.
They're due by December.
That's what, that was part of what I have written down here, they want to, they want help to get the grant so they can run that broadband.
I just want to pass them on. When I see something about Kelly, I'm, I'm like.
Right.